I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board members and public, good evening. Spring has sprung. That's good while I'm on. Secretary Steppik, would you be willing, please, to take attendance?
Certainly. President Donald?
Here.
Vice President Brazington?
Here.
Secretary Steppik's here. Treasurer Guthrie?
Not.
Trustee Bailey?
Here.
Trustee DelSandro?
Here.
Trustee Schaefer?
Here.
All right, very good. Any changes to the board agenda?
None.
All right, then we move on to the consent agenda. You've got the minutes from our last meeting, as well as some recommendations for employment, as well as just a small bills payment. Dr. Brazington has the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Bailey, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Pre-arranged request to address the board. We have student arts, athletics, and academics recognition.
Yes, and tonight, we have an introduction from Leonard, and so Paul, why don't you kick us off?
Each year at Leonard Elementary, we do a spelling bee. We have classroom bee in our fifth grades, then we combine the winners of the classroom bee into a school-wide spelling bee, and they compete against each other. This year, we had a really good one. It kept by going, it kept by going. I thought I was gonna run out of words pretty soon. It was back and forth, and Alex Tapper ended up coming on top. Come on down here, Alex. She can spell awesome, and when it was her turn, do you remember what your winning word was at the school? Yeah, I can't remember what it was either, but she went on to represent our school at the regional spelling bee at Oakland Schools back in March, and had a really good experience with that, so we were really proud of her. Wanted to introduce her to the board.
Congratulations. Fantastic. All right, Board of Education Matters. We have three things before us. The field trip request for the Oxford Choir, the appointment of a legal counsel, and looking at our reading schedule for next year. So let's talk about the first. Mr. Carter was with us last meeting, and talked about the trip to Ireland. And so this is what this motion is about. Is there a motion? Mr. Bailey?
I move to approve the Oxford Choir field trip travel to Ireland from February 6th of 2019, as presented.
Is there support? Ms. Schaefer? Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a second motion for representation. Dr. Brazington?
Move to appoint Clark Hill as legal counsel for Oxford Community Schools for the 2017-18 school year. And I guess my question is, should that be 2018-19? It should be 2017-18, sorry. So I'll read that motion again. Move to appoint Clark Hill as legal counsel for Oxford Community Schools for the 2017-18 school year.
All right, and is there support? Ms. DelSandro? Discussion.
I have a question.
Yes.
Who is our legal counsel now?
So we actually have...
True or whatever?
Yeah. So we actually have several, and there's actually two reasons for us wanting to make the appointment of Clark Hill. One is that they have an attorney that specializes in trademarks, patents, and those types of things, and we want to employ that attorney to help us with a couple of issues. The second thing is that previously, our special ed department used attorneys from La Pointe...
La Pointe and Butler.
La Pointe and Butler. And that's who you appointed at the beginning of the school year to have Denise and her department utilize. Since then, that law firm has disbanded, some of them retired, whatever, and a couple of the attorneys that we utilized moved over to Clark Hill. So we also want to use them for that. But the short answer to the question is, we have multiple firms. Just depending upon the situation.
Their specialty, right?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Weaver? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I see it now. Meeting scheduled for next year?
So really, this is the time that we start to get prepared for our next fiscal year. And really, we're just looking for direction from the board as to whether it's your desire to continue your meetings on Tuesday nights after July 1, same timeframe? Do you still like the rotation of the buildings? Those types of things? Because we want to get that schedule prepared in advance. Pat does that, so that you accept that meeting schedule at your July appointment. But it takes us a little bit to call that together. So really, it's a discussion amongst you all. Just if that's your preference, that you want to stay with Tuesdays? Or maybe you want to change to a different night? It's the board's preference.
Any compelling reason why we should change it at all, on anybody's behalf? I love the rotation of buildings, for sure, and I've certainly made this day work. Any reason to change it?
No, I like the rotation, and Tuesday seems to be a good name.
So let's keep it. Now, Mr. Weaver.
All right. Today, we're gonna learn a little bit about the new accountability. That's a date we call it the scorecard. They're calling it a school index system. This replaces the colors that we used to get. And there's some changes, and so we're gonna go over the way it works, and the way it's set up. And if you brought a device, you can poke around and see all the scores a little bit, but the overall score is in the PowerPoint as well, too. So we'll go ahead and get started. The school index score is out of 100 points. You get a 0 to 100 is gonna be the school's rating. The district does not get a score now. So that's a bit of a change. There are six components that make up the 100 points. You can see them here on the PowerPoint. You've got student growth, proficiency, school quality, graduation rate, English learner progress, and assessment participation. If you don't have an area, obviously, like your elementaries don't have graduation rates, then the percentages for that area get dispersed equally among the other areas. And you get, there's still accountability for subgroups. You gotta have at least 30 students in order to have a subgroup. And subgroups really impact a school's index score. Matter of fact, whether or not you have a subgroup is probably the number-one impact on a score. And it's mostly, if it impacts negatively, causing it to drop. You can see the different subgroups at the bottom of this. Racial, ethnic groups, English learners, economically disadvantaged students with disability, which is your special ethic. Any questions to this point?
Has that subgroup increased from last year? Has it always been 30, or is that...
Nope, that's always, that's federal law. It's always been 30. You can kinda see, hopefully you got a chance to look at the PowerPoint. This slide does a nice job of going over all some of the changes. The last column, the third column, is the school index, and you can kinda just briefly go through some of that. Each component, by the way, I should have mentioned, also is out of 100 points. And they calculate whatever your total points out of that. They times it by the percentage of the overall, what percentage it was of the overall, and that gives you that component's overall subtotal in the end. And then you take the six components, you add it up, it won't add up over 100, and that ends up being your score. The other thing that you should probably look at, that are different, that are probably important to us, is the school quality index. They are trying to add more factors into the school quality index to make it more of a fair measure, and to try to... There's a real push across the nation and across the state to look at children more holistically, and less as a test score. That is going on in all states. There's still, that component is there, but there seems to be more of an effort to see that a child can't be in ELA in math the whole day. That they've gotta enjoy their day, and that they enjoy those other areas as well. They're all important. Obviously, test scores are still important. The biggest indicators or biggest components of the score are your student growth and your student proficiency, which that is based off of your M-Step or SAT scores. Okay? Any questions? Oh, the other thing I should mention, too, that is much better with this system. Under the old system, if you didn't meet like the 95% requirement for testing, you like lost all of your accountability. Like you went all the way down, you were lowered a complete color. With this, with this system, they change, rather than getting 100% of the points, you get that percentage. They times, like, let's say, if it's worth, just for example, 100 points, and if you add, if you met the 95 percentile, you would get 100%, let's say. But if you go under, you get that, that percentage of the points, so like 94%. They times everything by that, your student growth score, your student proficiency. They times it by that percentage. So they, in a sense, penalize you, but it's a much more fair and much more understanding penalty than it was previously, where you lost or went down a full color for your school. And you might have had, we had that happen one year at the high school. I don't know if the ambience, maybe you might have been on the board at that time. But we had, I think, one subgroup didn't have a child test, and they pushed this over the, or under the 95 percentile, and the whole school color went down a color. So that kinda rectifies some of that stuff that was happening that really wasn't quite fair. Because sometimes they miss test, and it's out of your control. There are common statewide targets that are set that will remain constant through 2024-25, and those are for the M-Step. So what are the targets? They use, this first column is the baseline, and then they set growth targets. And you can see them here for proficiency, for ELA, math, for growth, graduation, EL progress, school quality. These are the targets that we need to be hitting by 2024-25. That's kinda frightening to say at times. But anyways, the system overall, okay, and I think the key takeaways is... Gonna start looking at those. Thinking about it. As I've said before, it's a little more forgiving. It's a little more user-friendly for the schools. It tries to look at children holistically. And I think overall, it's a better system. It's not perfect. There's still a lot of holes in it, and like I said, there's still a lot of impact on subgroups. And whether or not a school has a subgroup determines whether or not you many times the quality of the school's score. Okay? If you have a device, while this one's still thinking, and it's crashing, we can go to MySchoolData. You can see the scores if you wanted to. I put them in a step ladder. But if you also go to MySchoolData.org, or if you wanna like move closer to somebody that does have a device. See if I can get out of this. Oh, jeez. Does everybody know a tech director?
I'm gonna get a cricket director here.
MySchoolData. MySchoolData is on the front of our website, too.
There we go. We're going now. There you go. You just had to have that threatening presence over there. It's always starting to get into here. So you go to MySchoolData, and if you go to the menu, and this one displays a lot more, a lot different than what mine is. This displays on my computer, so it threw me off for a minute. But yours should be, if you've got more than 16 by 9 screen, you should be fine. And you go to MySchool, and you go to, I think it's the K-12 grade tab, and you can go to School Index. So you go to the K-12 tab. If you have some troubles or anything, raise your hand. I'll help you out. All right. Oh, it's MI. Sorry, I should have clarified. It's M-I-SchoolData.org. And so when you get there, are you there yet?
No, no server.
Well, it's going very immaculate.
Yeah. Do you have M-I?
M-I-School.org.
No, it's, yeah, it's M-I. Yeah, it all corrected for you. MySchoolData.
MySchoolData.
Data.org.
I'm in the right place now.
All right, so then go to K-12. I think yours is probably gonna be in that menu of options.
I already went there.
Oh, you already went there. Oh, you're way ahead. Then go to School Index. There you go, sir. You're way ahead, and are you... You getting there? And I think you wanna go here. And K-12. And School Index. And then you search for a school. Make sure you get our school district, because there are duplicate names for schools, and you can look up, and you can see the different components. So I think you're there. Go to the menu. Go to K-12, sir. There we go. And then go to... Oh, yours is... There you go. Just a bit stubborn. Got it. There you go. Now just put in a name. So we won't take too long. I just wanted to show you, this is where you... Yep, and then you can, if you click on the different charts, you can dive in and see the numbers behind it. So you call up the school. Dr. Brazington's got it. She's probably looked at her own. But you can call up, and then you can see the scores, and you can see how they're computed. If you want to, not right now, I just wanted to show you where it is. If at home, you take some time, and you've got some questions, you can always email Mr. Throne or me. Email Mr. Throne, let him know, and he'll fill them to me, or I can answer them at the next board meeting. Overall, if you look, let's see if I can get the... Up on the board is the overall scores for the school districts. And as you see going across, this is a neat little graphic, so I used it. Like, the main difference, like, the elementaries here, like Leonard, Clear Lake, they did a great job at everything. I don't wanna take anything from them. But like, the difference with them, and like OE and Lakeville, you're gonna notice these have subgroups. And the impact of that subgroup is quite dramatic on the score of the index score for that school. Okay? So just be aware of that. That doesn't mean that it negates the score for that building or for the buildings that don't have subgroups, but that is just a factor that goes into the overall scores of the schools. Obviously, your alternative schools, where you see you've got kids that are in situations that, you know, sometimes not of their own making, but nonetheless, not as focused on school, not as focused on education. You know, that proficiency and those growth scores with, based off of state standardized testing, it really doesn't match up with their strengths and so forth. The index still doesn't take that into account. There was supposed to be some alternative accountability developed for them by the state. It doesn't seem to have gone anywhere. Seems, matter of fact, just kinda dissipated and gone away. I mean, that's one area that I think I would prefer to see developed over time, is a better accountability system for alternative schools. Yes, Dr. Weaver?
What subgroups does OE have? I was trying to figure that out.
I believe it's students with disabilities. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yeah, so you just gotta scroll down. Okay, great question. And that tended to be the biggest, if they had a subgroup. Middle school had to have a subgroup. I don't think high school did, because it's just 11th grade. And so you gotta have over the 30.
30 kids, like, in 3rd grade, for example.
Yes. Well, no, it's 3 through 5. Yeah, but growth, it's only 4 or 5. So some buildings had it where it was in growth and in proficiency, and then some buildings had it where it was only in proficiency, but not in growth as well, too. And then economically disadvantaged. That was the other main subgroup that the buildings had. So both of those, economically disadvantaged children as well, too. All right? Any questions? So if you have any, just email Mr. Throne. I'm sure he'll fill them to me, or you can ask them at the next board meeting, but I prefer no surprises, so I'd like to be able to answer your questions. And then the other thing, really quick, in your board packet, there is a resolution, which you will look at passing the next time you meet. It is on the Seal of By Literacy. I did a presentation, I think, a month ago. Kinda giving you a heads-up on that. We also worked on board policy. We had a meeting last week. We have a follow-up meeting on this Wednesday. We got the board policy and the resolution done. We trained first on the Seal of By Literacy, and what is the process, what are the state rules or regs on it? And then we went ahead, we created a proposal for a board policy, and then we created the resolution as well. I'll be honest, we used templates and stuff that are supplied. It wasn't anything that was all done by our group. But we got it done. We got the language done. We were happy with it. And so we presented the resolution. The board policy will go through committee and work its way through that way. The hope is that if we can get the committee work done on Wednesday of this week, that hopefully, we can recognize at least some of the kids. Maybe not at graduation, but maybe after the fact. Just trying to get this in, sent through to the state. They are going to even try to award it this year even. So for the June 2018 graduates. So we're trying to see if we can get that done. A lot of it will be the AP and DP students. But we wanted to try to make that effort at least, and then set up a process for other children as well, too, that maybe are not in the AP/DP courses of language, Spanish and Chinese, to be recognized. Okay? So if you have any questions on that, just email them, and that's it. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. All right. No Mr. Barner, no financial reports? Human resources. District. Of course.
Regarding finance, we had a workshop scheduled. Do we have a new date for that yet?
Yes. We agreed on that at our last meeting, and we're gonna do it before our...
Next board meeting, I think it was.
We just said you were gonna select a day before meeting.
There you go. Yep, May 8th at 5:30. We're gonna supply some dinner. So we'll have a work session before. We're gonna do it right at... OE, yes, because the board meeting's there that night as well.
Thank you.
Human resources.
Thank you for approving the recommended new supplier. The first recommendation was for the Oxford Virtual Academy instructional coach, Jordan Dennis. So we're excited to welcome Jordan. He is filling, somewhat filling, you know, shoes of Matt Santola and doing some other instructional coaching pieces that are, you know, structured that will really help the program. So we're excited to welcome him. And we also have two of our new administrators in the audience. Anita Kanja is gonna stay with Anita, I'm sure of it. Anita is going to be our executive director for elementary instruction. We're excited to have her. She'll be working with Penn and with the elementary principals directly. So it's going to be a very rewarding experience, I'm sure.
Definitely. Everybody that has worked with me is telling you that.
This is your last chance to say it twice.
We wanna welcome Anita. And also David Pass is our new HR. So he will be coming July 1, but he's also going to be doing some transitioning with us. He actually attended our teacher union group meeting tonight, and got a little taste of that, so it was a very nice experience. And he'll be working with me a little bit, and I'll be introducing him around the district as well. So we're very happy to welcome.
Thank you.
So you got a little taste of that, and you got a little taste of this.
And they're still here?
Nothing else?
That's it.
All right. Student services.
Nothing from student services.
All right. Number 10, policy. We've been looking at the mission statement, right? So do we have a motion? Someone, Dr. Brazington?
Move to approve a second reading of policy number 2105, mission of the district.
And is there support? Ms. Schaefer? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Unscheduled audience participation. All right. A rather lengthy schedule of events. Note what was mentioned before, that our next meeting, May 8th, we're meeting an hour early. All right, any clarifications?
None.
Final board comments. Ms. Schaefer, how about we begin with you today?
Okay. Welcome the new members that have been hired, Jordan, Anita, David. Welcome, glad you guys are here. So, nice to meet you. Let's see, what else? I'll just keep it short. I'll keep it at that. Welcome aboard.
Mr. Steppik? Thank you. I'd like to welcome you guys as well. You're gonna like it here. We're a fun family. I wasn't at last meeting, which would have been the best time for me to talk about this, but... I just, and nobody's here from the department either, but the play. We went to see the play. It was just phenomenal.
Cinderella?
Yeah, Cinderella. The stage setup, the actors, the music, everything was just phenomenal. And I just want that department to know, just keep doing it, because they do just such a phenomenal job. That's it.
It was awesome. Mr. DelSandro?
Welcome.
Ken, thanks for your presentation, I, I do want to say that I've been here longer than what I thought I was going to be.
Because we're a family.
Exactly, a fun family nonetheless. But I think this is the third set of guidelines that the state has put down since I've been here, and so I've never been one to say, let's just make it easier to make it easier, but I've always been one that says, let's be fair, and I think we're working closer towards that, and I, I still think that there's some room on the state level, just like there's some room on our level, to get better, so I'm glad to see that we're at least moving in the right direction, and I think Oxford is moving in the right direction, the state's moving in the right direction, and maybe, just maybe, by the time I'm done, we'll have this thing. That's it.
All right, Mr. Bader.
Again, welcome, glad you guys are a part of the family, and I'm glad to see that we were able to get the filter for the choir. I saw the early presentation on that a few months ago, and I can't wait to, to hear the, the experience that the kids have while they're over in Ireland, and what they get to see, because I think this is going to be a great opportunity for them, and I'm a little jealous.
I think Irish board members should be able to go.
Yes.
No.
No.
Dr. Brazenkin.
I'm just once again, welcome to our new staff, and really I'm excited about the whole idea of the seal of bi-literacy, I think our kids are really geared to gain proficiency in that second language, and I'm excited to be able to recognize that as a district.
Yeah, I'll work backwards, I agree, to have this new seal, I think is a, is a great step, and for you guys even to think about that as, as something that we should do, I think it's awesome. The new hires, good to have you, a little good timing, and great job, you know, you've done it, just the process was really good, and so, it's wonderful. And to our spelling bee champ, or whatever, that was awesome, too, I mean, it's got to be tough to be dragging in front of a bunch of adults, but that, that, that is really cool. Other than that, I don't have anything else, how about you, Mr. Throne?
I already told both of you, welcome, I guess I just, you know, say for the board's sake and the public's sake, that the candidate pool was just exceptional for both of these positions, and to have Dave and Anita accept these positions, I think just speaks to the quality of people they are, as well as what, what we plan on having them bring to the, to the table for us, and so we at central office and the entire district is, is looking forward to working with you, so, welcome aboard, and yeah, this, this seal of bi-literacy has been a long time coming for me personally, in that I wanted this thing way back when Zach was coming through, and we couldn't, couldn't get it done, so I am glad that we're finally there, and we finally give our, our kids who spend so many hours trying to obtain that second language the, the recognition they deserve, so, with that, I'll stop.
Any other? Yes, sir.
Tim brought up a great point, and I just want to kind of expand on it a little bit. We had a great pool of candidates, we've got some great, some great people coming into the district. I, I, I just want to say that this district has grown so much in such a short period of time, and we've changed the way that people think about Oxford, people now want to be at Oxford, people want to hopefully stay at Oxford for an entire career, and it has a lot to do with board leadership, central office leadership, so you all should be committed on the jobs that you do, and I think it's, it's really being noticed out there, we're now at White House, so thank you for your work, everybody at central office's work, so.
Very true. We're good? I don't have a gavel? Great, you get to be a wildcat, there you go.